We call this meeting to order, the Littleton Board of Selecting, Monday, November 26, 2018. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
The first appointment is the Perchance Lake Association.
So they're not going to be here tonight?
Who are not going to be here tonight.
He called me today to confirm that he was going to be here.
I wonder what time it might have been after all.
Yeah, okay.
It was up earlier in the morning, I think it was popping.
Yeah, okay, in the morning.
So, that takes us into the Town Manager's Report.
Okay. First up, I'm requesting that some funds be reallocated from the legal budget. In 2016, we began changing the way that we handle contracts through town and had invested heavily upfront with legal and liability review. We're starting to see some of the savings in that in legal. This year, we have significant savings there, and I would like to utilize those savings to begin outsourcing commercial economic development and capitalize on a one-year contract to do that. So, the RSA 3210 allows that, and so requesting the Select Board to reconsider doing that tonight.
Yeah. We'll check it out. I'll put it under Board Action.
Okay. Next up is the NHDOT 10-year plan. We have a guest, Alex Belins from North Country Council, New Hampshire. Under RSA 22899 and RSA 240, require that the DOT every other year create and update a 10-year plan for projects with their infrastructure there. Invite local communities to participate, and what we're looking at is submitting an application to include Phase Two, Main Street Phase Two, as an inclusion in the 10-year plan. I'd like to invite Alex to speak a little more on that, and then his participation.
Sure. Yeah, so essentially, DOT will present solicitation, include the regional planning commissions every two years to get projects into the 10-year plan. And so what we would look at here is basically submit the full program of needs for Main Street Phase Two to the 10-year plan. So typically, in the 10-year plan, you'll get a lot of projects that include roadway reconstruction, intersection improvements, things of that nature. Pedestrian improvements are a little less common, they usually come through the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is what's funding the cottage street and mill street work. But when it's paired with a larger project like Main Street Phase Two that includes streetscape improvements or construction of the roadway, can make a compelling case that that should all be done at the same time to minimize, you know, the construction abilities and things of that nature. And so, yeah, the instructions we have from DOT is submit the full program of needs, and then DOT may make recommendations about, well, here's a different way to proceed if they think that's, there's all different means of doing so. Essentially, how it works in terms of getting projects in the plan is we solicit projects from our entire planning region, which is basically Plymouth area, north up to Pittsburgh, so we have 50 towns. We get about $6 million allocation for new projects each round, which translates into two to three projects per 10-year plan round, depending on the size of the projects. And so, we submit an initial list of the projects to DOT, they do a review, they develop a preliminary cost estimate using their engineers, and then we get feedback from them based on their view, and we get some refined cost estimates and see how many projects fit into the allocation. And then we have a committee that prioritizes those projects based on set of criteria and submits that to DOT, and basically the projects get ranked up above the funding cutoff, and the top-ranked projects get funded down to cutoff, essentially. So, no guarantee that project gets funded by getting submitted. And what else? It does move a little slow in terms of projects getting into the plan and getting constructed. So, right now, they're soliciting projects for fiscal years 2021 through 2030, and typically new projects get put in the last two years of the plan. So, two years of projects get completed, they have to get the plan, two years open up again. So, most likely, we can't assume that anything other than a new project will get constructed in fiscal year 2029 or 2030. So it is, it is a long-term look. Projects do get moved up depending on what's going on locally, so if there's an opportunity to match a project with another project that's occurring locally, there have been examples where projects do get moved up. Conway just had a project, we talked about five years, because there was going to be basically consecutive projects going on that would cause a significant amount of delays over the course of many years, and they made a case that they should have done it at the same time when they got a project moved up. But we can't assume that going in, that that would be the case necessarily.
We probably should have had this project submitted years ago as part of the 10-year plan, when we first knew about it, but now we can get ahead. We apply year after year for the Tiger and the Build grant, and, you know, the likelihood of success is really unknown. I think this would be our fourth or fifth time applying for those funds. A portion of this project used to be on the 10-year plan, I think it was on the last one from two years ago, and it may have been carried for a few years, but without funding secured, it expired. I think the state was including about $200,000 towards the Saranac realignment portion of it. So, now we're resubmitting though with the entire project. And basically, what we, I believe we need is a, we need a motion of support coming from the Select Board, showing that you support this project being submitted to the 10-year plan.
We'll also take that up under Board Action.
All right. Next up is Recreation Center proposal, and we do have a few guests here tonight specifically for that. We have Ward and Chris from Sam and Delia Architects, Chris Wilkins, our Parks and Rec Director, and Jeff Braemer, Parks and Recreation Commission. And they're here to present, I think, where we're at with the project and as input for the Board. So, I'll pull that up. All right. I did have a little timeline on here. Building up to this point, we've gone through years of process. This is, I believe, started in 2014 when the commissioners first recognized that the recreation building was inadequate. Shortly after that, I believe it was condemned for public use. And then shortly after that, they approached the voters for a warrant article to begin studying it, and we then went with a second warrant article. We released the RFP, had a review committee, the commissioners have been working, helped several public hearings.
You've got two warrants, right?
That's correct, yep. So... Let me get, they've got a presentation here.
This is our, the presentation that we...
Thank you. That's good, Andrew, that's good.
I guess that first page is the slide now.
Yeah, yeah, I flipped it over. I'll flip it when we get to the next one.
So when we printed it, it came out the right way.
Yeah, there we go.
All right, well, thanks for having us. It's kind of a review going back about two years ago now, when we came on board to look into what does a rec center need in terms of facilities and also programming that would go into those facilities. So this is kind of just a quick overview as to what we had proposed when we first came on, on the team. We looked at, we're going to look at existing conditions, meet with the commissioners and the community to define those, what needs are there. We've had many public meetings to do that, some community outreach, again, additional commission review, a town forum, and then get into actually designing the building. And then we are into Phase Two here, form a building committee, and then develop a schematic design of the building, which we'll be presenting tonight, and also costs associated with that. And we'll be looking towards kind of next steps. So that's kind of what we've done over the last two years, and I was going to take you through kind of how we got to where we are, and then we can talk about the project where it is today. We're going from there. So on the next slide.
Can we rotate that for you?
So we looked at, we met with the commissioners and the rec director at the time to really start to understand what is the rec department, what do they do? So this is just a list of, you know, everything that the rec department, kind of a summarized list of everything that they were involved in at the time, from winter, spring, summer, and fall. And I think you have about 100, 100 students in day programs every day after school as well, part of the rec center without a formal space. So it's kind of a general overview of what the rec center had. On the next. So, and then we talked about what are some of the potential programs. And we developed this list with both the commissioners, and then we also had a town public forum where we broke out into some subgroups. Everybody brainstormed kind of the 10 most important elements to them, and then we all came together and talked about those and shared them. I think we had about 80 or so people attend that public forum. So that helped kind of define what do we want to have in here into the new facility. Some of the big items was, you know, a basketball court, they're always being, they're always full, can't find space, exercise facilities, both for the youth as well as the elderly, kind of the whole community. And that's, you know, different facets of that athletic department, or excuse me, fitness rooms, both yoga and exercise to spaces where kids can go after school. Also, swimming pool, indoor swimming pool, right now you have an outdoor pool. We also looked at kind of some of the deferred maintenance of that pool and how it's getting to the time where it needs to be replaced, could we incorporate that into a new facility? And then locker rooms and other athletic facilities, so. Keep going. So we also looked at kind of the greater rec program as a whole in Littleton. We've got a great trail system, and then the next slide. And also, we went toward and discussed kind of the merits of each one of these facilities is the Brickyard, the Dells, on Remy Park, going across the river, and then down, just going outside of town, is your main five, five facilities right now. And we're trying to, in this study and in our conversations, we're trying to define where would we want to put a rec center to accommodate the needs of the town. Each one had, you know, serves the town in different areas. Settle on, Remy Park is a great downtown park, it's close to the high school, where you have this, this use of the current fields. Also, it's, it's in a neighborhood where you get lots of use in the space. So, and we started to define where we would put this, this rec center. But we didn't want it to say, yep, Remy Park's the downtown park, we're going to go there. So we looked at the community as a greater... So keep going. So again, Remy Park, and this, we, let's look at the next one. We looked at, once we had formed a list of, well, this is the program that's going to go into the building, now we had, we had, we started to form up a building. Where at Remy Park could it go? We discussed the pros and the cons, and with the community as well, this was all presented in a public forum to, you know, where, where would this best go in town? One of the locations was up where the existing playground is on the corner. Again, it has a really nice connection to the high school and leaves the rest of the park where it, it's existing location, and also parking. Some of the discussions here was, we didn't want to lose these trees, this is a nice area of town. Because with Remy Park, the benefit of it is it is in a downtown area, but also it's in a downtown area, and we're going to be putting a sizable building there, we wanted to have it look and feel and have the right scale, and also preserve some of the nice attributes of the park. We didn't want to have to take up any of the nice elements. So, then option B, it was presented, another site, which would be over where the existing old backstop was, it was converted into a maintenance facility, and the skating rink in the winter. And that was kind of one of the main reasons why we didn't go with this option was, parking was going to be an issue, we didn't want to have to eliminate this existing, a new basketball court, and we also wanted to preserve the skating in town. So, as you can imagine, we kind of settled on option A, but wanted to look at all of them, and then another option was that we tuck it into this bank over here, which will be on the next slide. That, again, would disturb both the tennis courts, and also we're starting to build into the bank, and we're worried about construction costs of that, so the price would go up. Some of the benefits of this was, was can we, can we use the building to access the pool better? Unfortunately, it's too much of a bank, it's, you know, it's more than a three-story jump up to the top, so it's not like we can tuck a building in there, put it in an elevator, and people could access the pool easily, it's just, it's too far up. So, that's what we ended up, really with option A, was the prime site. Then we also wanted to, in our programming discussions with the town, really look at the individual attributes of this, this building, not just look at this as, as one big rec center, but now what are the elements? You've said that the, a pool is important, a yoga studio, all these different elements. So let's talk about each one individually, so we can really get into why that's important to the town. And also associate the cost with it, so we can really survey the town and the studio, what is important. So then we, we looked at and presented each element that we had identified was an important piece to the town, that we talked about is a small pool, a large pool, the different, different program pieces, lap lanes, and then we keep going, kind of flip through these, you know, a small gym, a large gym. And as you can see, the costs kind of start to be associated with these. We can see, you know, is, is there merit to a small gym with smaller locker rooms or a larger gym, where one is, is half a million dollars and one is closer to a million? So we can, you know, see which, which direction to go, as then we come back and start to form a building. So we can keep flipping through. Again, you know, your aerobics studios, it's all, it's adding square footage, so it's more space, it's more money. But is it worth it to the town? Is the, is the need there and the value there? So we had some great discussions, again, with that large group in the town. Keep going. And cardio rooms, weight rooms, some of the discussions here was, you know, we, there are other weightlifting facilities in town, we didn't want to be distracting from their business. And in terms of operations, is this a different business model than what we're looking at right now? Is it really the rec department serving the current community as it serves now, just giving it a facility? With some other amenities where the senior centers or other people within the town could come over and use the basketball facilities, where the aerobics room offer more classes but not take away from, from other facilities? Same with the pool, is it, it's a great element for the community, but is it, is the cost going to be worth it? And then in terms of operations, is it, is that going to add more staff and more maintenance? And what is the model that we're trying to create with this rec center? So, again, a large meeting hall, smart rooms, games rooms, multipurpose rooms, these are all elements that were identified in our initial programming study that were important to the town, so we could look into all those. Some of the things, the meeting hall and multipurpose space, could we have a small kitchenette for, for people to rent the space? Again, there's some revenue there, and it's just more, more use for the facility. So we looked at all those different elements. Keep going. And then, now that we've started to form a program and really defined the size of the building, we then went back and put the building on the site to see really what was the best fit for the, for the town. This was with the commissioners, we had some great discussions as to, you know, the merits of having it over here in the existing playground. And the next option was, you know, again, back over where that existing backstop maintenance facility is, which is then when we settled on, on option A. It seemed to have a great focus on the connection to the high school, it didn't disturb any of the existing facilities, there was, parking was available, and it's generally a flat site. There is some slope to it, but we didn't have to disturb a lot of elements in town. And we've, so we've stepped the building off the main road, again, to, to keep the scale proper, also provide some screening, and then located the building so it is adjacent to this ball field, so it can become a venue for serving these, these greater sports programs, the basketball, the summer use of these courts, the pool, the fields themselves, and then the actual facility, the basketball courts. In this option, we were looking at a larger building. So that was when the town and really said, you know, a gym is important and a pool, that's what we're looking at. Part of that was when Chris came on the team, and we looked at, and really dove into what is the business model of this, this program? And what is it going to take? Chris had some experience in his previous facility of actually running a pool. And that's where we looked at is, you know, is this really what we want to be getting into right now? So you'll see where we, where we are today, there is no pool, we have the, the fitness centers, the, the space for the students to come after school in the gym, and then in the future, we have an opportunity to add on a pool. That would have, you know, your operational costs are much greater, and, and your initial upfront building price is that much greater for a pool. So then we, if we want to keep going, again, we can get into the, you know, the details of the plans, but we developed some floor plans that reacted to those discussions. Keep looking. You know, second floor, fitness center, another element was a race track, so we want to be able to give people an area where they could come inside and walk in the winter and in the rain. So trying to have this be more than just a center for your student population to go to after school, this is a community center for the whole community. So trying to really bring in the athletics for the gym, the fitness centers, but also the elderly to come in and have classes, use the track, so it's, it's used throughout the day. There's different times that, you know, different user groups are using it more, but it's a, all day long, it's going to be a kind of a hub of the community. So, you know, we looked at, what does the exterior of the building look like? And we'll get to the final rendering. So again, trying to, to work with the existing kind of vernacular of that neighborhood, so the building fits in the community. And now we, in our, in our last review with the commissioners, we really focused on, you know, let's get this building down to what the, the community has defined as the, as the actual need, which is the gym, a few fitness center, aerobics rooms, kind of multipurpose space, locker rooms, and a children's rec room. And then have an opportunity in the future to add the pool line. So again, we, same location, they're looking at reworking the playground, so that would be incorporated into this design, some new parking, and we get to the plans. So the new facility has, when you come in, come in off the parking, come into a reception hall, where then you access, we have two fitness rooms and a kids' playroom, and those would be multipurpose rooms, they can also be split down the middle, so you could have multiple classes going on. And then a gym, which again, that would serve both the rec department, schools, kind of throughout the day, and then a maintenance garage off the side, within locker rooms, and then in the future, you could add on for a pool. So everything's set up, so we wouldn't have to be tearing anything out, we could come in and just add the pool on in the future, the locker rooms would accommodate both, both the gym. And then the exterior, I think we pared it back slightly, we keep it fairly utilitarian, the gym itself, looking at how do we build this facility in the most economical way, using a preformed metal building, but then siding it with a more traditional siding. So again, trying to keep those construction costs down, but also have it fit with the community. So this would be kind of your main entrance to the building, and inviting space for the community to use. And then we come to the costs in the last page. Just when we printed it, it all came out this way. So, looking at the costs, we broke, broke the building out, the town hall, excuse me, not town hall, it's a typo, the Littleton Rec Center, construction costs with site development and construction contingencies would run about $3.3 million for this, for this new facility. And then architectural engineering, furnishings and contingency, again, your own owner's contingency would be another $370,000 for a total project price of roughly 306, uh, 3,688,000. But then, if you were to add on the pool in the future, it'd be another $2 million with a $360,000 in architectural engineering and soft costs built into the building. So we're looking at about a $3.6 million project for that new rec center. It's kind of the, from where we were to where we are now, kind of a lot of information. Now we're looking at kind of the next steps and what you guys see for moving this forward.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
Any questions or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're going to decide anything tonight, but you've certainly given us the material that we can study and hash over in a work session to see what we want to propose to the voters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. There might be public questions, maybe public comments, it's good.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure there will be.
All right. So, next up, just a quick overview of the tax rate. At a recent work session, the Select Board voted on the setting the tax rate, and we also, as part of that, is the valuation. So briefly, here's what the valuations came down to this year after the reevaluation, about 30% is utilities, that's, this is what percentage of the taxpayers are contributing to the, to the entire value of the town and the tax rate. So 30% is utilities, 16% is raw land, 36% is residential building, 1% is manufactured housing, and about 17% is commercial industrial. And then to take a look at the tax rate change, in 2017, the municipal tax rate was 8.51, and now it's $7.90, so it's a 61-cent decrease. The town school was 13.29, and it's now 11.62, that's a $1.67 decrease. And the state school was 2.39, and now it's 2.09, which is a 30-cent decrease. And the county was $1.63, and you can see it's $1.49, for a total reduction in the tax rate of $2.72 per thousand. And these are based on the new value, new property valuations and the budgets approved at the previous town meeting. And if you take a look at, you know, where is the tax rate, where is the tax, the total tax rate of 2310 going? For local and state schools, it's about 59% goes to schools, the town is at 34%, and the county is about 7%. That's a brief overview of the recent tax rate setting. Do have just the other thing for the grant.
Okay. Is that it for your Town Manager's Report?
It is.
There's upcoming meetings and notices. Next on the agenda is old business, I have none.
Oh, I do have the other, we can do that after, oh, afternoon. This is the resolution that I needed for a grant application.
We're going to do that under other, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I had no new, no old business, no new business, and we have a new item under other business, if you explain that.
Okay. So recently, the town received a grant, and the Select Board accepted and authorized expenditure for the sound system at the Opera House. We're in a similar tight spot with the lighting system at the Opera House, and so what we're doing is applying for USDA Community Facilities Grant to get the funds needed to purchase the light system. There is a town match, it looks like we have, we will be able to come up with a match from piecing together monies from some other projects. And what I would need from the Board is a certified resolution signed by the chairman, authoring, authorizing me to apply for the funds and with the USDA Community Facilities Program. The project is about 50, just over $50,000 to do the lighting. Currently, we don't have lighting for performances or stage lighting, it's all held by a private entity and experienced inability to use.
We'll take that up under... We'll take that up under Board Action also. Board of Assessors, we have nothing. That takes us to the Public Comment section of the agenda. Is there any public comment? Mr. Ward.
Last week at the Economic Development Task Force, I made a presentation about seeing, calling it Littleton Together, and how can we hit a billion-dollar tax base by 2023, and how we could do it, and why we needed to do it, which is primarily to be able to afford a new Lakeway Elementary School and other projects, obviously. One of the things, I'm not going to go back over it again, because once is enough, but one of the things that I did present was the potential to expand the number of brands that we have within the community. And after that, I originally said that we had 40 brands, and that we had a potential with a strategy to possibly double that brands from 70 to 80. Well, a couple of people after the meeting, in a very nice way, challenged me, and they said, you know, Brian, I think you're a little light on the number of brands we have in town. So over Thanksgiving weekend, I have been plugging away, reviewing the industrial park, Main Street, all over town, to see the different brands that we currently have. And the reason why brands were important is that from the '20s up through into the '60s, Littleton had about 25 brands, and they were pretty much focused in the Main Street area. Starting in the '60s, those brands easily went down onto the Meadow, or they left town altogether. Now, that happened in Main Streets all across the United States, the First Nationals, the A&amp;Ps, the Woolworths, the J.J. Newberries, they all left, those were the brands, they all left everywhere. So one of our challenges during that time period is we never replaced it, and that by 1992, we didn't have any brands on Main Street, and that was one of the reasons why we had 17 vacancies. Well, after being able, one of the goals of the Economic Development Task Force was to obtain a Walmart, was to give people a reason to come here for retail, because our brands were gone, and there really wasn't much of a reason to come. And it took us six years, but we finally got a Walmart. And with that, we've got a lot more brands since then. So I wanted to present, and I spoke to Carrie earlier today, she said that you guys were going to be discussing possibly bringing on the Buxton Group sooner rather than later. I am a big fan of the potential that they have, with appropriate supervision, to be able to really help us recruit brands. If there's one thing that both at the retail economic development level and also at the industrial park, excuse my French, that we really suck at, is being able to actively recruit. Our primary position has been, if we build it, they will come. It's also our default position, and that's what we've done, basically, which has worked out to a certain degree. But I think with some of the expenses we're facing, a more aggressive approach would be helpful. So I put, I worked over the weekend, and I still don't have all of the brands listed here, but I did want to give you a little bit of my research to show the brands and the tremendous impact that they've had. And what we've been able to achieve with our brands is, we have some very unique, great local assets that are local anchors, Chudders, Pofido, Jack's Juniors, Thayer's, the bookstore. We have local entrepreneurship, and the brands complement them by getting other people to come to town to take advantage of those. And that's where the blend works, and it works pretty well. Bruce Hadlock's here, his son Casey, a couple of years ago, did an analysis and identified that we had over 50 vacancies in town. Well, that was true. We've been working at that, and there's less than that now, but there's still more work to be done. So what I presented to you are 78 different brands, you'll recognize them all, because they're all part of our town. And there's some that are missing that I have not included that I'm going to update and get it to you. Does not include Buick, Burger King, Fisher Snowplow, NFP Insurance, Polaris, Tender Afterbite, McClure's Maple Syrup, and what's our best-known brand worldwide? Littleton Coin Company. So there are other brands, and they have a retail outlet at their business building, so that there are other brands we'll be adding, and I wouldn't be surprised if I come up with another 10 by the time, and I'll update you with that. So I put down a goal, which was originally was to double it, and I guess I'm going to put the same goal down. Now, you guys can be, I'm a little bit more aggressive, you can be a little more conservative when you set a goal and back it off, and that's your job to do. But one of the things that we can do collectively is set some goals from the selectmen to recruit a Kohl's, a Target, a Market Basket, bigger boxes that, to complement the Lowe's, the Walmarts, the Shaw's, the Home Depots that we already have. And we can do that with help. Can't do it very well, nobody's been able to step up and do it on a local basis, but I think through the Buxton Group and with oversight, we can achieve a lot of that, because Littleton is, I've used it before, with the North Country Trading Post, Hudson River Trading Post of the North Country, people come to Littleton because those brands are not available elsewhere. So I hope you will consider this, and again, there was mentioned at the meeting that AT&amp;T, Five Guys, All of Them, Starbucks, Urgent Care, Wendy's, there's a whole series of the ones that allegedly kicking tires around town now. We may end up by the end of 2019 with another 10 brands on top of what we've already got. So I wanted to get the information to you as you discuss the Buxton Group, and I'll tell you that I will be working and updating this list, but it's a pretty impressive list, and it's work for Littleton. And I think, Carrie, you as a retail person, have seen where having other businesses bring people to Littleton has been beneficial to you.
Very much so.
Okay, any questions or?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Is there any other public input? Mr. Hadlock?
Regarding the proposal that they made on the tax situation, I believe that the most recent one that we've had up here in the North Country, I was out in Newport, Vermont. You people should study what they did up there. They actually went and did exactly what you're talking about. They built the place, they put an indoor pool, they got a track arena, they had support for people. We'll find out what's happened today, we went belly up.
So, was it owned by Jay?
It was, no. This was owned by the town, okay? And they did exactly what was being proposed by you people. And financially, other thing on it, they went up and it was sold recently, I don't know, for Haggis or something like that, but consequently, they went belly up out of it up there. And I think it's a good lesson for you to learn, to go and do some research on that particular unit.
And one of the, you know, I don't know, throughout the presentation, it was scaled back?
I don't care whether you scale it back, you go study what they did, and you see what they did, which was very much what they're proposing here.
That's already part of the process.
And their, their community of their other thing on it is probably about the same size as we are. They were next to the Canadian border, other thing on it, but they did Newport, Vermont.
Yep. They call me a Jew.
Yeah, so we, we looked at Claremont as another model, and then the CCB over in Lebanon, New Hampshire. We went and studied those, and spoke with the director of the Claremont facility, who, you know, they built one with a pool in a larger facility, and it was operating in the red. So part of the reason why the facility that we have designed now is the size it is, is a reaction to just that, is they went a little too far, and the revenues from the town couldn't support the Aquatics Center.
Let me say this, we will, when we consider what we're going to do, take in to consideration Mr. Hadlock's remarks in terms of looking at other communities, what they've done or haven't done, and how they ended up a little bit farther down the road.
The other part is, they just mentioned the, Southern Grafton County is not like Northern Grafton County.
Neither is Newport, Vermont.
That's a core area, too. There's no question about that. They've always had economic problems and stuff like that on it, too.
We will be, we will be sure to weigh on those considerations.
You say you got to weigh in on the basis of the economics, when you're talking about Lebanon, Hanover, even the real estate down there is double the people what we did up here on it, so.
We will, thank you. Is there any other public input?
I got another one.
Mr. Hadlock?
I, after the last meeting that I came in here, you guys made reference to the tax rate, other thing on it, and I asked some questions about the amount that was scheduled under the, under the amount of money that was going for utilities. You sent me the town office, I went there, and the, my question, first of all, is, have you signed any contract with any of the utilities?
With who?
Utilities.
Have we signed a contract?
Have you signed any contract based on assessments with any of the, with any of the utilities?
I don't think so.
Such as a power company or?
The answer is no.
No, you don't have any, no, at all. Okay, that was one of my questions, other thing on it, in that part. The, it looked like you had increased the assessment on the power companies by about $12 million, one thing on it comparatively, over the last year.
There's no contract.
I didn't say that. I, yeah, I knew you told me that, but they still have increased the assessment from one year to the next by $12 million on it.
And that's because of the, well, Andrew was saying, but that's because we're theoretically 100% assessment now.
That's correct.
Correct, but consequently, as a result, you're paying less than what you have with the housing. You had, when you did your housing situation, you had 477 people that turned around and showed up on the assessments on it. And then you went back, and they agreed to change the thing by 188 people were changed after that, whether they went up or down, I don't know. But consequently, what I'm looking at is, you set something, and when you increase things like down in the, I looked at Lowe's, to give you the same, for one of a million dollars, when those people in turn have that, what are you going to run into come January, when they file the tax abatment on it? On the thing on, it could be a substantial amount of people that are going to file, and it could be, in case a few people turn around and don't negotiate with them, then they're going to be taken to court, which is going to cost a lot more, too.
True.
And I understand that you're going to federal court for another lawsuit?
Usually. I said usually.
You've got one or two things on that?
Pardon?
You have one or two courts that are in there for federal lawsuits?
The plaintiff appealed to federal court.
Right.
Well, we don't have any choice.
Well, I understand that, I just didn't know whether, you know, it's not being brought out and told pertaining to it, and that's an expense that you have to incur to defend yourself.
Is there, was there a question with that?
Well, then, when is it, where do you stand with it?
He appealed, and we filed a motion, we, our attorneys filed a motion to dismiss. That is pending.
That's what I was asking.
Can't tell you anymore, then it's pending.
I just read it, but it's on.
Is there any other public input? Mr. Gelsi?
Yes. If you got to this to project, the one, you know, the DOT, 10 years of plans, do you think the citizens in Littleton, they can have some paperwork, or it's something just going on a bit with the agents at the tree selectmen, you know? I mean, you must, you guys must have some paperwork about that, right? What, what, what the town is, what, what the people are going to know, when are the people going to know about that? Excuse me?
He told you, it might be 10 years. It's a 10-year plan.
I didn't say that. When you start now, 10 years from now, you start now, you start tomorrow?
You start the paperwork as soon as we agree to do so, if we agree to do so.
And we citizens in the taxpayer, we would allow a copy of this project?
So the project would go, if it was accepted, and, and put into the plan when we think it would be, it would go to start engineering, 2026, 2027, at that point, there would be public hearings regarding designs, construction schedules, and coordination with any other projects that are going on. So the public, there's public hearings on that. There's also, when the 10-year plan is being developed, there's what's called GACIT hearings, it's the Governor's Advisory Council on Intermodal Transportation. There'll be one, there'll be those throughout the region, and all the potential projects will be discussed, and that's another opportunity for the public to weigh in. There's typically a hearing in Littleton during each cycle. Last year, the last time I was in this room. So there's opportunities for public to be engaged and provide their input throughout the process.
I think, I think the answer is, as it progresses, if it progresses, and there's a whole series of public hearings, when something's going to happen.
I mean, the proposal they, it's kind of in sense of it, that nobody's going to know about just on him, at the, you know, the bosses.
Talk about your notification process, your legislature council, registration by the plan.
Yeah, so, I mean, we have, it's discussed at our committee, our Conservation Advisory Committee, which is publicly noticed, and it's something that we're, you know, this is a project that is, it's not, this project hasn't come out of thin air in terms of, this is a project that we, the town's been pursuing funding for for quite a while through the DOL program. And so, since before that, I think this project was actually originally designed back in, when was Main Street?
When the first project.
Eight, nine years ago.
So what happened was that the project didn't get enough funding to complete the whole, whole thing nine years ago, and so it was scaled back. And so what this is, this is the second half of that project, so it's a longstanding a look.
Well, I explained it, but probably that gentleman, he doesn't know that in 10 years, you guys, you are going, that is, I mean, whoever's going to substitute to you guys, you know? What do they do? They start again with your 10-year proposal, or they follow up, you know, whatever.
I think there's a, I think there's a misunderstanding. Right now, all it is, is, is trying to apply for a grant. There's no, there's no project plans or design or anything, it's just applying for the grant. If, what he's suggesting is that if this makes it through the process at the DOT, the project wouldn't be slated to be done until 2026, or start the engineering, 2026, 27. So there's really nothing to look at, we're talking, just talking about applying for, or trying to get the project passed as a grant.
And this gentleman, he asked you guys, you know, if he can apply for the grant, are you guys going to apply for the grant, and what you need, that's.
The action taken, that Andrew stated, and I'll read it again to you, is consider making a motion, the selectmen support
Yes.
the Main Street Phase Two project being added to the New Hampshire DOT 10-year plan.
Yes.
All we're saying is, we want to be in it for consideration in the future.
But not on you guys, because 10 years, you guys are going to go, right?
It has nothing to do with that. You want me to read it again?
So the projects are, they become, it becomes New Hampshire DOT's project, and they do the engineering, they're in charge of the construction, unless the town specifically requests that it be locally managed. So it's not, there's not, each iteration of the select board doesn't have to come back and say, we support this project and go through the process again. Once it's in that plan, it's DOT's plan.
Okay, thank you. I also want to ask you, you know, it's about the recreation center, draft project, do you think we can have a copy of this, you know, whether you guys show on screen over there?
Yes.
It's just, if this ever here, eventually, you know, it's going to go on a warrant article or stuff like that with the people, you know, to realize that if they can spend what it does. What is happening there?
Under four.
Under four?
Under four.
It's under four.
And there will be more public hearings as well, more public meetings, so.
It's nice for a capitalist that you can go up, you know, and tell the people what you guys want, you know?
Yeah.
How much money you want from the taxpayer, right?
Not up to that, the select board will make a proposal for a warrant article. Based on the information they gave us.
Then I'm going to talk about warrant articles, Mr. Chairman. Then I'm going to mention warrant articles, okay? Because I care pretty good. Another thing that I want to make sure, you know, that you gentlemen know about, Mr. Woods, you know, he talked about all this jobs, you know, that going on and stuff like that. One thing that I forgot, he never mentioned all the stories that they closed in Main Street today, is it? He never mentioned one. You got 10 stories over there that they closed. He never mentioned one, he just mentioned the one, you know, this, this, and that. That's what he's got to talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public input? Mr. Hadlock?
Watching the proposal, we're
Watching the proposal that was designed by this gentleman over here, I believe that your town attorney has done something illegal.
You, you believe what?
The town has done something illegal.
And what's that?
The fact that, we went to hearings, we went in the town building, and the hearings were to take care of the additional amount going over and over by Cory's store and stuff like that. And then they asked for a money to do that. That was, it shows on that drawing. They went all the way, the, I believe that the town, as well as the River District, cut it back. You can't do that. When you ask the people to turn around and raise money, it's a hearing in the town building, and they made the proposals all the way, including up by the bridge, that new bridge, and going up around the corner and stuff like that. I believe the fact that the town can be held vaguely liable for what they've done. On it, because they cut back and used less, they cut back to where it would be on the, the cost of the car. They moved it down. The hearings and what was proposed to the people in the town alone to raise the money was to include all of that. Now, between, who did it, between the, the town, as well as the other, other, what do you call it, the River District? Between the combination of what they gave and did with it.
Well, the River District is a commission of the town.
They're only a recommendation.
Right. So, it's the town that acted illegally.
So, it's the town, and the town in turn, I believe, is legally responsible when they appropriated what was, you know, how much money was that they went to bond with it?
$900,000.
$900,000. And what they did was, that $900,000 was to include the entire process. That's what the hearings were for. They had them in the town building. Whoever it is, whether it's a selectman, the town up here, somebody has cut it back. And that's not legal to do that when you raise $900,000 out of the thing on it and ask the people to vote for it. You cannot cut back with process and have less than what it was proposed for. And I personally think that there's a, that the government in turn could combat against you people completely, as well as any resident or citizen out of it, on the basis of the fact that you in turn cut back the program on the basis of what they designed it for on that $900,000.
Well, if everything you say is true, what would you suggest we do?
I'd be lucky if you didn't get sued or held responsible by the United States.
No, I'm looking for an action recommendation. What would you suggest we do?
Well, I wouldn't do it again. That's the precedent.
Thank you. I think we've acted.
When you have hearings out of it, and you hold hearings and you do it.
I'm trying to get to the precedent. Say we're guilty as charged. What do we do? How do we fix it?
The government in turn could be the problem, because you in turn, well, it's not just the government. The $900,000 in turn was voted on by the people to do that entire process. And you people in turn didn't, somebody didn't. Whoever's sitting here on there, you may not have even been there when it was done, I don't know. Somebody within the town.
Okay, I, I, I don't think your assertion is, is true. I don't think anything illegal was done. But I guess we'll just wait and get sued, to get sued before we worry about it. There's nothing else we can do. So, let's just, what else is there to do?
And if it gets sued, what do you do?
Hire the lawyer.
Defend yourself. Is there any other public input? Seeing none, we've got some actions to take. The first of which was the, what's called the budget transfer. That was the $50,000 to pay for the Budson project. We can discuss it, we can have a motion and discuss it, we can.
We have to have a motion to discuss it? Do we start it?
Well, why don't you make a motion to do it, or not to do it, if that's what you wanted to do?
I, I would make a motion that we transfer the appropriation, as requested.
Is there a second?
I guess I just feel, I mean, this is, I'm very much for it. I really am. I guess just seeing it this morning, being able to kind of process and how it would look a little different. I mean, I'd like to move forward on it.
We're going to have a second of the motion before we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Oh, second.
Okay, so you second. Open for discussion.
So, I, I got a couple of questions. First, this is a, I, I remember going to the meeting and it was, it was great. And I'm, I'm very much in favor of the whole program. The question I have is, when we were, when, when I was at that meeting, I remember it being a three-year commitment. Are you saying that they're willing to do a one-year commitment?
Yeah, yeah, I would, if this was approved, what I'd do is negotiate further. But they've indicated they're open to a one-year agreement. And also been able to push in some other areas, but it'd be part of the negotiation, so.
So, don't get me wrong, I, I would certainly be, I wouldn't want to do this as a one-year thing anyways. But I am concerned that we aren't able to fund it the next year. And I don't want to be committed to it without having that funding in, in place.
Absolutely. And one of the things to think about too is the fact that the default budget rules have changed. So, even if you did offer, say, let's go for a three-year contract, I mean, that's no guarantee.
This doesn't become part of the default budget?
That's right, yeah. So, you know, ultimately, what we may look at is the potential of doing a warrant article or trying to fund it anyways.
Well, I, I, you know, just in terms of the support for that, I'm concerned about future funding for it. But in terms of support for this, for the very reason that was mentioned earlier about the school that we need and being able to fund that, we need to expand this commercial base instead of putting it on, you know, having it entirely on the backs of the, of the residential, you know, taxpayer. So, I, I'm, I, I really thought this program was, was fantastic when I saw it. I think it's a great opportunity for us to, to start to expand that commercial tax base that we really need to do to be able to fund things like the school and the, the rec center, whatever format that takes, we're going to be able to figure out how to fund it. And so, I, and I, and I do think that we are, we're in competition with everyone else who's, everyone else meaning other communities, who are trying to attract a commercial business as well. And the, we have a great location, and I think it's, it's proven because of the way it's been happening up to date. The fact is, we're competing, we're competing with a lot of communities that have dedicated staff doing this. And it's going to be tougher and tougher to get, make that next step to get additional, additional commercial development. So, for those reasons, I, I strongly support this move.
If we approve this, Andrew, when would it kick in? When would, I know they've been doing a little bit of work, but when would their services start?
As soon as we negotiate a contract. It would take, I think the implementation takes like 30 to, I think it's 30 to 60 days to get really moving. There's some of the things that we can do with the small businesses in the downtown. I think we can do that immediately.
Yeah, I neglected to, to bring that. So, though, that option that gives the local existing businesses those tools to utilize, that's still part of this project package for that one year?
At this point, it looks like I may, I've been able to double the number of licenses.
Okay.
You know, I seeing this list makes me think, maybe that's not even enough. I was trying to get enough licenses that we'd be able to help every business, you know, small business in Littleton to be able to capitalize on using the tools. The tool, I believe, is called the Scout Platform.
Yeah. I'm primarily concerned with Main Street on that issue. And I don't want to ignore everybody else, but I'm, I'm primarily concerned with Main Street on that. If there's enough licenses to cover that.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and the local business community, like, for example, I met with Jack Eames last Friday. And I'd like to thank Jack Eames, he's offered to give $5,000 towards this. So, in all likelihood, we wouldn't be spending the entire amount because of some of the private monies that have been allocated. I do have a commitment, but a verbal one, I'm trying to make it a reality from a developer. So, see if I can get that, that as well.
One of the challenges with this too, that, and just kind of sharing it with some others, is where the unemployment rate is so low that we have businesses coming in, like yesterday or Saturday, Amados had to close because they didn't have anybody that showed up. So, brand-new business, and there's nobody to work there. So, that's something I think we have to look at. Could they get creative? Because they can't ship in their own employees either, but.
Right. So, one of the things of these tools we've looked at too, and I've been talking with N C I C about, is the state itself is looking at the demographic issue, you know, for, you know, how do we find people to move to, not just visit, but find people to move here and be a part of New Hampshire's community. So, I've been in talks with the Buxton group about using those same tools to specifically target areas and individual profiles of those who might be interested in coming to New Hampshire, whether it be, say, a suburb from Boulder, Colorado, where somebody's just tired of traffic and they want a similar situation. So, we're looking at using that.
The, the commitments you have for, for private funding for this, your intention is to use that to defray this cost? Or to, to, to have commitment for the, for the next year and try to build enough to cover that?
Both. So, some have at least discussed multi-year agreements. And some have said, you know, hey, I'm going to give you one time. So, for example, Mr. Eames, who's really generous and said, you just, you have to get this going. I'll personally do it at $5,000.
Anything else from you?
No, I don't think so.
I'm opposed to doing this this way. I think the voter should decide. I think it should be a warrant article rather than out of the budget. And for that reason, I, I can't support this. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item we have to work on is the 10-year D O T plan. And Andrew's request was that we support the Main Street Phase Two project being added to the New Hampshire D O T 10-year plan. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
If we apply and it's, passes the process, and we, now we see that it's 10 years out, I'm assuming then we would stop applying annually for those types of things and, or not for those types of things, but for that, to cover that project. So, if this is approved, we can count on that not being done for 10 years. Is that a fair statement, or am I, I'll win on that?
That's, that would be, it's D O T's preference, is certainly once they set aside that money that they're not going to go and, yeah, find an alternative way to get it funded ahead of time because it creates a headache for them. So, that is, that is typically how it works. And one thing that could happen to this process is, one thing they look at is, what are the alternatives that have been tried and are available to getting funded this way? And they may, the recommendation may come back that they recommend that the town continue to apply for bill funds as opposed to currently taking it. That's something that could come out of the review. So, we won't know what they have to say about that until we send, until we send something out.
I've got kind of mixed feelings about getting approved for this, quite frankly.
I, I think that if we had been on that list a long time ago, like the, the calendar would line up with ours better. But at the same time, I mean, personally, I would want to keep applying for funds elsewhere so that, you know, we still have something to fall back on if we're unsuccessful. We've been unsuccessful for five or six years on this now.
Yeah, there's no reason to just sit back and wait.
Yeah. You know, I think that, you know, in the future, there's going to be projects that do intersect with this area. And, you know, maybe there, if they do improve it, there's some consideration, like, for example, SubArea Two is an area that has to intersect with this. Or, you know, if we in the future created a T I F district and somehow integrates with this. But I would like to agree with Skyler, I want to keep going after it.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. The last one we have to decide on was the, the special for the opera house lighting. And how much was that again? Or what's the resolution?
For $50,000 application to the U S D A.
And the, well, we get a motion first. Is there a motion to sign the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion.
What's the town match?
Yes, thanks.
The town match, I believe, is 20, about $22,000.
And where would it come from?
I would, what I would do is.
Stealing your question.
I would commit funds that are set aside for opera house improvements right now.
And come out of the opera house improvement budget.
Find another source in the meantime to supplement that, we can keep those moving.
Because if we don't have the sound system, we don't have the lighting, we don't have the revenue for the, the shows or.
Right.
Okay.
Big time wrestling, you know? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried unanimously. That is it for, for action. I have nothing else on the agenda. Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Hadlock, you wish to reopen something?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to point it out, when, I don't think anyone who, who you mainly carried was around at the time. But the, the Main Street, when they got the money, we were very fortunate in Littleton. Carol Bolby was the head of the Transportation Department. And she was the one that could funnel the money into, to make sure that the town of Littleton got the money to be able to redo the Main Street and everything like that on it. We were very fortunate. She came from Littleton on it. And we got, we were, we had a good person on there that helped us out substantially out of the thing on it. So, I don't think that we're in that same position today.
Good enough to remedy that.
Thank you.
We're adjourned. Thank you.